Do they do that to you when you leave your place of work, not paper but liquids?
Linda, on your, I don't get any documents for all the CIP requested, what we have, what we have scheduled right now.
Yeah, get it.
Jeff got a call to go have a phone spring.
For Dexter, I was like, I probably need to put it together, but really nice job, but I don't.
In the last.
Oh, thank you.
You had to have like a one hour safety before they even let him into the facility.
Really have to plug in something that, that one point, potentially one point seven.
They almost didn't let him in because he didn't have steel tubes.
So we do, but with that placeholder in there, soon as we know what we're doing.
A water pump. Yeah, they have a one hour.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a big thing. He left with his own hair net, hard hat.
It's not in stone. This is a working, but this gives us an idea, especially staff of what we should be looking to put in next year's budget.
Yeah.
A reflective vest.
Yeah.
A mask that they gave him.
Yeah.
But by then we'll know where we're going with the school, I think, and what we're borrowing and what we're getting for funds and.
Yeah, yeah.
But now if I have to go to other stuff plans to work on their monocoques, I've already had to.
Those numbers are, you know, through law or whatever. Estimate generator, so.
That was that whole and spring when they got their first GCM estimate.
And he, you know, he was clear that it was thirty percent either way.
And I would run.
And we had a thirty, forty percent increase a lot, some of them even more, so just to build it.
What's a GCM?
Uh. Distro, gas.
Yeah, true.
We're gonna look if, you know, if we're gonna really look at that, it just seems like there should be something plugged into that. I would say it's improved for optimal.
It's a, it's a, sure.
Oh.
Uh, you just know what the GCM is.
If you get a, you know, fundraiser, you do well.
Yes, spectrum, yeah.
Chromatograph, the city is.
I did at one point. I had like a hundred and fourteen or a hundred and twenty thousand a year in there for payment.
Chroma, uh, chroma. Spectra.
Spectrometer.
But it's back to range, spectrum. I left with this last because we still, we're working with a blank slate at this point. We just know it's gonna be a mess.
Oh, 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 okay.
Gas.
Yeah.
Chroma, graph, spectrometer, something, measure all of all the organics.
A call of meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag?
The religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Change in the agenda, item seven, the approval of the public works director will be removed. And so on to approval of the minutes for the last meeting, June sixteenth.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written for June sixteenth.
Second, so there's a motion by Chris, and a second by Mike to approve the minutes of June sixteenth. All those in favor? Thank you. Next, department reports and. Dan, I think I can see you, Dan.
I can see you too. So good evening. Fire departments responded to nine calls over the past two weeks, so we've been fairly steady. Nothing too significant to report on, fortunately. That does bring our calls up to sixty-two calls so far this year for the six-month period. As you guys know, we've had some recent promotions and assistant chief will be, Smith will be stepping down tomorrow, effective tomorrow. And assistant chief Anthony Siderio Junior will be taking his place. Captain Greg Kohler will be taking Anthony's captain's spot. And then we just recently promoted Nate St. Laurent to lieutenant. So all three of those officer positions will be effective tomorrow, July first. Linda has agreed to come over to the center station tomorrow, late afternoon, about five thirty to do official swearing in of Anthony. And also Ed Pollard, my other assistant chief, who has a two-year term that just expired. So she'll be renewing his with, with his swearing in as well. There's another reminder, the fifth annual beach party is coming right up in a few days. So I just want to put out another reminder to the townspeople. It's gonna be this Saturday, July third, from five to ten PM down at the town beach. We'll have several food vendors, live music by Tattooed Lies under the pavilion and fireworks displayed properly at nine thirty PM. So far, knock on wood, the weather's looking promising, so fingers across for that. And we'll be closing down the, the beach parking lot, probably about noon time. So people that want to come frequent the beach on Saturday, if they don't get there early enough to just use the beach in the morning, they'll, they can still park on Beach Road and it's gonna be shut down to one, one side of the road facing outwards towards Main Street. So we're just gonna, we're gonna try to enforce that and, and I know Kevin is gonna have a couple officers coming down about mid-afternoon to assist in that matter, as well as during the event. And at some point, we will shut down Beach Road. It's probably gonna be late afternoon. Also, the parking lot for the boat ramp will be shut down probably about three PM. So anybody that wants to get their boats in the lake to observe the fireworks from the water, they need to get their boats in before three PM. Because after that, we're gonna have to shut it down for the pyrotechnic company that's gonna take up the ramp to do the loading of the, the barge for their fireworks. And then I think that's it on the beach party, so looking forward to that event. Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Ask a question?
Yeah.
I have seen at least one weather report that said there might be some showers early in the afternoon. I just think that we ought to plan to cover the launch tubes like we didn't do the other year.
Yeah, as long as it's not a drive and rain like we had experienced the, the two years ago. We had sideways rain that made it very difficult and we had to cancel or postpone the show to the following evening. And, and that's a good reminder, Tim. Thank you for bringing that up. We do have a rain date Sunday night at nine thirty for the fireworks. I don't know about the band or the food vendors, but certainly, you know, they're welcome to, you know, postpone, you know, their activities as well if, if they can make it Sunday night. But definitely if we get rained out for Saturday night, the fireworks will be the following night on Sunday, which is July fourth, which will be, you know, competing with other shows, but I, I believe that's the, the rain. Actually, no, I take that back. No, I, I believe it's the following Saturday. So it'd be Saturday, July tenth is the rain date. I stand corrected. You know, we, we were gonna do it on July fourth, because I don't think central main pyrotechnics can have the staff to do another show that evening. Another reminder, we got the Red Cross coming with a blood drive on Tuesday, July sixth from twelve to five. And again, pre-registration on their website is required. So if you haven't signed up, please do. And the last thing I got is just, uh, just to let everybody know that the fire department was present on a couple of evenings last week at the Monmouth Fair for the rock crawl and, uh, I think it's called the redneck truck pull. We did have one incident with the rock crawl where somebody got injured when their vehicle rolled over. So it was good that we had crews right there to respond and assist. And we had a small, small grass fire that got stomped out, probably careless smoking on Saturday evening, so. That's all I, all I got. Any questions about the fire department?
The water rescue training, did you, you had that already, right?
Yes, we did.
How'd that go?
Yeah, went, went well. We went down to Cocknoywoggin Lake and unfortunately, I didn't have my boat to assist, having engine issues. So we, we did use Marine eighty-four and we had another member that brought a boat and we did several boat rescues and had a few of our younger firefighters jump in the lake to be rescued and we even did a, I don't know if you guys know this, maybe Mike does. We took a two and a half inch hose, charged it full of air and we used that to send out to, to rescue somebody. It's pretty neat to see a fifty-foot, two and a half inch hose charged full of air and, and use it to pull somebody in. So that was pretty neat to do that.
Four inch works pretty good, too.
What does four inch? Yep, we haven't tried four inch, but I, I heard you can do that, yeah.
I was just, just curious because there was another water rescue on the river and, and, you know, eleven-year-old boy's alive because the fire department was ready to, to help.
Yeah. No, we're, we're ready, you know, if, if the caller comes in, hopefully we, we never get that call, but we're there if we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan?
Yes.
Are you zooming from your new place?
I'm sorry?
Are you zooming or right now from your old, from your new place?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I'm at eleven eleven Main Street right now. Nothing on the wall behind me. It's coming. I was in here officially as of yesterday, so. Gonna, gonna do the whole decoration thing soon.
Yeah, you need a, you need a, a fire department background or something.
I'll work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Valhalla.
Hi, evening. Speaking of Monmouth Fair, I had an officer up there for the Thursday, Friday and Saturday night. As I know, everything went well. And the only thing I have to have right now for this report would be the May monthly report. We did have a hundred and sixty-nine calls to service, a hundred and forty-four motor vehicle stops with nine criminal summonses and arrests. We had three OUIs, four criminal speeds, an operating app suspension and also warrant arrests out of that. Are there any questions on the May monthly?
No.
That's all I have.
Is anybody else there? Keith, were you gonna?
No, he doesn't have it. He's here for CIP. Unless you wanna get up. I didn't think you guys. Only a couple of things. I just want to let you know that we did the year-end closeout today and that's, we were closed for that. And tomorrow, the auditors are coming and we'll start the new year off. I was up at the admin building a couple times this week already, just looking at that and getting that space ready to move your meetings up there. We're having it cleaned. We're going out to pick up the new television and laptop so that we can get that ready and get more equipment up there. Also, I had someone looking at securing the doors today and putting, just making the doors more secure. We're gonna have more equipment up there and I want to make sure that it's secure. Enough said. I've gotta get the bug people up there because we do have a little group of ants living in the building, so we'll make sure of that. I think it's gonna work out really well. You'll get your old conference room table back and your comfy chairs and, wow, these comfy chairs. I think it's gonna be good. I think it's actually as big as this room, so we should have plenty of room for people. The only other thing I have is just for those of you who didn't meet Libby last week or two weeks ago, this is Libby Beartrand. I hope I pronounced that right. And she is going to be taking the select board and planning board minutes and Board of Appeals if it ever meets going forward the minutes.
So do we have a, a security system up at the administrative?
We have a system up there, a, a security system, but I can't tell you exactly what it does. I mean, it's not cameras and that kind of thing. But we're prepared for things like fires and heat and that kind of stuff.
And unauthorized entry?
Well, we don't, we haven't had that up there, so that's something we have to look at.
I think we should investigate putting in a, something with sensors that would alert us if there's an unauthorized entry.
I'll look into that. I'll talk to the chief about it. The other thing I'm thinking up there, and there are credits that we can get for doing it. Just thinking about going forward and we're gonna be using that building a lot, hopefully. But I'd like to look into putting a couple heat pumps up there, one on each end of the building. And then we'll have some AC in the summertime, which I got to thinking about, boy, if we were up there meeting tonight, we were there today. It was pretty warm up there. So you're gonna want something. But for the next few meetings, they can't get anything like that installed before the end of the summer this year, but we'll put some fans on there. But I will let you know if we're going to be up there for the fourteenth. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Next, select board reports. I do have some things that I'd like to say, but I didn't know if Mike or anybody else wanted to say something first.
I just wanna thank Mike for his service because this really is his last meeting tonight. And so Doug and I conspired and some cookies on your way out. So there's some treats. Yes. So thank you.
Well, I'll echo that sentiment.
You brought cookies too, Harold?
No.
I'm a cookie eater, not a cookie baker.
And I didn't bake the cookies. I will clarify. I didn't make the cookies.
But thank you for, for doing your civic duty.
Yeah. One of the things I will say is Mike has, has helped us think on some things and has presented some different viewpoints and I think it was well worth it. Thank you. And please don't hesitate to let me know if you have any more ideas or anything else at any time. Thank you. The other thing I did today is, and for the last few days, I've been talking to the legislature and I've been talking to Bob Devlin from the county commissioner's office. I spent some time with him, Bob Devlin, today in particular, and with Linda, talking about the CARES Act. The CARES Act. May.
ARPA.
Oh, we're on the second one. I'm sorry. Thank you. He kept saying the CARES Act and, and anyway, we're on the second one, the new act to provide money to municipalities through the county for COVID-related reimbursements and relief. One of the, it's, it's very limited what you can use the money for. It's very difficult to deal with. However, there is one proviso in there that does seem to apply to us. And that is that if you're renovating a space for social distancing, there may be grants available for that. He's working on the grant application now. We're gonna see it. He's gonna send it to me by the end of the month. And then we'll see if we can apply for any of that money and see if it'll help us with the old Monmouth Academy building. The other thing I did is I talked to our representatives, the legislature. I've been in contact with them for a couple, three days now, off and on, trying to talk about different things. And they are researching what we might be available for or what might apply to us for this particular project. That being said, I would also like to say I think we need to start the fundraising committee for this project immediately. It needs to be done right away. If we were to get twenty-five hundred people to pledge a donation of two, an average of two hundred dollars, that's half a million dollars. That would be a big chunk of the money that it's gonna cost to deal with this building. And as a part of that, my wife and I want to be the very first ones to pledge at least two hundred dollars. So you can count on my wife and myself. I envision that the fundraising committee would have to probably send out about five thousand letters of solicitation. One to every household in Monmouth and one to every alumnus from, from the academy. Hopefully it would bear fruit and help us. That's my big spiel for that.
Yes, just a couple of things I just thought of. One, as Tim was mentioning, the school, on your next agenda, you have a discussion, next steps on school. Also, the playground, next steps, and also reconstituting the economic development committee. So those three things are going to be on your next meeting for work session. I forgot to mention that the state budget passed this afternoon. So our revenue, revenue sharing is expected, if I calculated it correctly, to be about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated it was going to be, which should help.
And what about, did you get any word back from State Agency Education? Because that was supposed to increase also.
Oh, it was in the budget, the fifty-five percent of education. And I have a call in, a voicemail into the superintendent to find out exactly how they plan to proceed using that fifty-five percent. And are they going to use that to reduce the tax impact of the increase in their budget this session?
I would certainly hope that they would.
But she's on vacation, so we, a few days.
Of course, they did have a very big argument about what, fifty-five percent plus?
Was it the, the second article when we voted on the school budget not to do with?
Additional funds.
Yeah, there was a.
Kind of like the question that we put on our side to allow us to use additional funds, which also covers us to apply the extra revenue sharing to reduce the mill rate this year. If we hadn't had that in there, we would have been pretty much stuck with the four hundred thousand that we had passed on the ballot. But now we can use it all.
But I still wanna pursue them and get a commitment from them that they're gonna use that to reduce our burden.
Right. And I do believe that the amendment to the CMP versant bill passed today. At least I know that it passed in the House and the amendment was the one that would make it a taxable entity. So they do away with the payment in lieu of taxes and make it taxable. I know that passed from the House and then they flipped it over to the Senate today and I was in meetings after that and wasn't able to follow it, but I'll find out what happened with that.
I'm hopeful the governor will veto if it does pass.
Sounds like you might.
Well, and then one other thing that I might add, I've been trying to follow LD two ninety and get a final determination on that. LD two ninety is a bill that, if, if, because it did pass the House, it was sent from the Senate forthwith for enactment or however they determine. It doesn't mean the governor won't veto it, but basically what it says, and then of course they allow the right guidelines and all the other stuff. But basically what it says is anybody over sixty-five wanting to own can freeze their property tax bill at the previous year. And the difference has to be made up by the rest of the town. Or no, no, the difference was gonna be made up by the state.
State will reimburse us a hundred percent.
Yeah, to the hundred percent difference.
But that's LD what?
LD two ninety.
Two ninety. Last I knew that that had passed. I'm just looking to see if it's been signed by the governor.
I can't find out. I even called up there and asked. They're supposed to give back to me on it. But that will provide some needed relief for our senior citizens, some of whom are struggling and, and we'll want, if that does get signed by the governor, we'll wanna make sure we can enact that.
But they do have to apply for it. And I think they have to apply every year or something like that, yeah.
Yes. As I read it, it was every, you have to apply every year to keep up.
Okay.
The only thing that I wanted to say, you know, from what Tim was chatting about, I, I've, you know, felt long and hard before, you know, the vote ever went for the academy about how to go about doing the, the fundraising. So I've got a long list of ideas for fundraisers and people that have graduated from town to bring back, to help with fundraisers and working with the alumni association to get lists of the alumni of the academy to do mailings and to do all of that and start to, to push for those funds. And I've had several people ask already how they can donate and, you know, Linda had already said, make it up to the town Monmouth and put academy building fund in the memo. And so, so, you know, I've already had people asking and I've got a long list of ideas, so.
Please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'll help you with that.
Well, once we get the, I think.
I presume you're gonna try to take the point on this.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I don't assume to do anything, but I, if I, we're gonna make a new committee next in two weeks, then I'd like to be on the committee and I'll, if I'm not, I'll share my ideas, so.
I think, I think given your enthusiasm and, and what you just said, I think it's more than appropriate that you should be on that.
Well, it's, it's important to not burden the town and that was the biggest thing, that I always wanted to never burden the town with the, the, that financial, that big nut to cover. But so coming up with ideas and being forward-thinking, you know, I had already started to devise plans.
Well, you certainly have my support for the leadership position on that committee.
You don't want it, Harold?
I don't.
But thank you for asking.
No, but actually I think, I think, you know, you do have the enthusiasm. You do have leadership ability and this would give you the opportunity to demonstrate it, so.
Watch over.
If you're willing, you know, and certainly the rest of us will help in any way or form we can. Go to meetings, back you up, do research, printing, whatever. You just don't hesitate to ask.
Yeah. Yeah.
I do that for a lot of different committees. I do it for a lot of different organizations. I do what I can to help and do public service. It's, it's just feels, you know, it's an honor and a honor.
Oh, yeah. Well, it, it is. And that's how I feel, you know, if I can do anything to, to get that building back to my father's heyday, my six generations of family that have gone through there and to rejuvenate it for the next six generations. That's what I wanna do, so.
I'm presently researching some history and some photographs and stuff to try to do a little.
You get into a show and you gotta go back about sixty years.
Oh, well, the heyday, we've gotta go back. But I mean, even when I was in school there, I mean, the thing that I would love to try to have is that old wooden staircase that when you went out of the library and turned right and that old wooden staircase. So, you know, it's somewhere supposedly.
Really?
I had heard that when they took that out, it went to the museum, but that's only what I heard. I would, if it's not, then I guess maybe I was mistaken and somebody told me a.
The only place I can think of it might be in the, in the railroad house there. And I've been in there and I don't.
No, I, I, somebody told me that they were gonna save that because that staircase had, you know, the, the worn treads from, you know, back to the beginning of time, so. But that's it. That's all I have.
Oh, any other, I think that was, I'll slide. Next is public comment. A public comment?
Doug, I have something to say.
Yeah.
Doug is, is Ken Ackley?
Yes.
Hope everyone is well. We were in the, discussing some of the legislative bills that have passed this session. And one of them, I want to talk about because Tim had come to me with an idea about three years ago. It was a little late to put the bill in for the session that, that we were in, but it was a, an idea about allowing municipalities to offer a lower interest rate for senior citizens if they, if they decided they wanted to have some sort of deferral program for senior citizen property tax payments. So I was unable to put the bill in last session, but I called to attention the issue to some of my colleagues this session. The bill was put in by an independent legislator from Scarborough named Sophie Warren and it passed both houses and the governor signed it. And now if any municipality in Maine were to decide that they wanted a tax deferment program that would have a, an interest rate that wouldn't be like the equivalent of a reverse mortgage. They would now have the legislative authority to, to do that. So my thanks to Tim actually for prompting this change because that was the initial, that was the initial impetus.
Well, I might just point out also the original statute or the original bill that established that program requires an ordinance by the town. We have to make an ordinance. Winthrop does have an ordinance. But the original bill established the state, the state established the interest rate and the state established it, I thought ridiculously high. It, it, like Ken said, it turned out to be if you deferred your taxes for ten years, for instance, at the closing or the settling of the estate, basically the town would own your house. And and the descendants or the heirs would not be able to afford to to get it out of hock, so to speak. So if the town wishes to set a lower interest rate, now that's possible apparently. And I think it's an important aspect of home rule. And I thank them for getting that done. Okay. What's that, Ken?
That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Then on to the appointments of constables, the fire department officers and the registrar voters.
Thank you. This is an annual appointment of constables. I'm going to read the list for the public's benefit. These are police officers and our animal control officer. We appoint them or you appoint them as constables each year for a one-year term. Chief Mulharen, Dana Westling, Olivia Mora, Kurt Bachmann, Mike Mayer, Josh Hammond, Ryan Sherman, Reese Rodriguez, Richard Patri, Dan Ross and Andrea Orne without firearm. That's our animal control officer. Also, we have two fire department appointments for two-year terms, which expire June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. First Assistant Chief is Ed Pollard, third Assistant Chief Anthony Siderio Junior. And as Chief mentioned, I will be swearing them in tomorrow night, assuming that you appoint them tonight. And finally, I had taken over as registrar voters when Kelly left a few months ago, but that was only an interim position. We now have a permanent position, a person in the position that I'd like to recommend to the board to appoint to fill the remainder of that term, which would expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and that would be Deborah Nichols.
You want to do these all at once or should we move separately?
Yeah.
I'll so move.
Second, so there's a motion to approve the appointments for the constables, fire department officers and the registrar voters. And second, a motion by Tim and second by Harold. All those in favor? Thank you. And skipping number seven, so on to number eight. Request to write off interest and fees for seven five nine Wilson Pond Road.
This item is before you, kind of a follow-up to our discussion a few weeks ago about foreclosed properties. This was a property that straddles the Monmouth-Winter line and we're having a hard time getting mail to the property. And so over the years, they have not been getting their tax bills, they have not gotten their lien notices, and the mortgage holder was not notified. We went down to the property and met with the homeowner, who was really mortified because they obviously had an escrow set up with their bank. They called the bank, the bank paid all of the back taxes, got everything current. But they feel that because they never received any of the notices as the mortgage holder, that they're, we should, that they should not have to be paying the interest and the fees incurred.
But otherwise, the town's been made whole.
Otherwise, the town has been made whole.
Oh, second.
So there's a motion to write off the interest and fees for the seven five nine Wilson Pond Road property. A motion by Tim and a second by Mike. All those in favor? Are you okay with what this? Oh, next is an award of the bid for the police cruiser.
Thank you. When the packets went out, we did not have the bids in yet, but I wanted to put the placeholder on the agenda because I knew the chief wanted to get moving on this and not have to wait until your first meeting in July. Chief Mulharen opened the bids today and we are asking, he had two bids, one for nineteen six thirteen, which is the one we're recommending to Quark in Augusta, and the other one was for twenty-nine three thirty-two. So we're asking that you award the bid to Quark in Augusta for nineteen thousand six hundred thirteen dollars, and the chief is available for questions.
Why such a big difference in the two?
Yeah, ten thousand, ten thousand dollars.
I don't know. Chief, do you know why there was a difference between?
I really don't know. I've got the breakdown. The only thing that I'm, that I can see on the breakdown for the twenty-nine is it was a very small trade-in value. That's the only thing I can see.
So the other, Quark gave you a bigger trade-in?
Yes.
How much did that ten thousand, does that take up?
Eight thousand.
No, yeah, that that makes more sense. Okay.
So that's just, that's just the purchase price for the vehicle. That doesn't, that doesn't include any of the installation?
That's correct.
I'll move we accept the little bit from Quark.
So there's a motion by Tim, a second by Harold to accept the little bid of Quark of Augusta for nineteen thousand six hundred thirteen dollars. All those in favor? Thank you. And then, even though ten, eleven and twelve are all are separate on the agenda, we have to do them separately according to our assessing agent, Donna Hayes. So first is to authorize a supplemental bill, supplemental bill for map two lot fifteen to withdraw from the state of Maine farmland program.
These, all three of these lots are involved with the solar development that's going in. And in order to take these out of farmland, there is a penalty that the town can assess. The total for the three properties that the town will be receiving is thirteen thousand nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. And Donna did say that you should vote on these individually.
Move we authorize a supplemental bill for map two lot fifteen withdrawal from state of Maine farmland program?
And second?
There's a motion by Harold, second by Chris to authorize the withdrawal from the Maine State Farmland Program for map, map two lot fifteen. All those in favor? And then on to the supplemental bill for map two lot sixteen to withdraw from the Maine State Farmland Program. Will we authorize a supplemental bill for map two lot sixteen withdrawal from the state of Maine farmland program?
No, second.
So again, Harold made a motion, Chris seconded it to authorize the supplement, the withdrawal for the Maine State Farmland Program for the map two lot sixteen. All those in favor? Thank you. And I move that we we authorize a supplemental bill for map two lot seventeen withdrawal from state of Maine farmland program. So again, Harold made a motion, Chris seconded it to withdraw from the lot, map two lot seventeen lot, lot seventeen from the Maine State Farmland Program. All those in favor? Did I, have you all said?
I have one question.
Yes.
The chair votes?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. McDonald, you guys, we didn't register him that last time?
I thought I did. I meant to.
And so the motion's recorded exactly as written on the agenda, correct?
I mean, not right now, but I will.
No, but right, right. I stated it.
I can't type that.
I, no, no, I I understand that. I just want to make sure that it, I I stated it for a purpose to exactly match the wording on the agenda. So then on to warrant number forty-seven.
Last one, this fiscal year. Checks over a thousand. Bernstein, Scherzauer and Nelson, this is our monthly retainer fee and also some TIF changeover, the CEA changeover took, cost us some money with our TIF attorney. One thousand five hundred forty-two dollars sixteen cents. Blue Rock Earthworks, this is for recycling, two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. Central Main Power Electricity, two thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars seventy-seven cents. Dennis K. Burke for fuel, one thousand five hundred sixty dollars thirty-three cents. Howard Builders, this is a shelter for the transfer station, one thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars. Main Municipal Employee Health Trust, this is insurance coverage, health, dental, life and vision for the employees, twenty thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars forty-three cents. Main Waste to Energy, solid waste removal, two thousand three hundred five dollars forty-three cents. Monmouth Fire Auxiliary, this is the TIF payment to cover part of the cost for the beach party to the beach party organization, twenty-five hundred dollars. Monmouth Water Association for Water Service, thirty-one thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars sixty-seven cents. Pass Auto Repair for repairs for police cruiser, one thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars eighty-one cents. Treasurer State of Maine for motor vehicle taxes, titles, plates, seven thousand six hundred one dollars seventy-six cents, four thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars fifty cents, three thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars seventy-five cents. And one more for the Treasurer State of Maine for Moses for inland fisheries and wildlife for six thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety cents.
Move we pay, town is authorized to pay the number twenty-seven.
Second, so there's a motion by Mike, second by Harold to pay warrant number twenty-seven. All those in favor? Thank you. And then on to the work session, discussion of the survey results and the capital improvement plan recommendations.
Thank you. So the department heads and I have had and division heads have had several meetings over the last few months to pull together what we felt that the town needed in order to adequately do the job that needs to be done. The department has then took that list and put it in priority order according to wants, needs and convenience. And we came up with a list that we were going to recommend. However, we wanted to wait until we did the surveys. So we did the surveys online and I believe we had a hundred fifty surveys returned or a hundred forty-nine surveys online. Some of them, I think thirty-nine of those came from the same IP address. So we don't know if those were the same person doing it twice or whether that was two people in a family using the same computer. We don't know. However, we did have well over, I think it was three hundred seventy-eight usable surveys at the polling place that were done in person. So we know those people only had one survey and returned it. And when I say usable, it's because some of the surveys came back to us without people ranking their choices. They would just put a check mark on the ones they liked or an X. Or they might have just written a comment in below. We are confident, based, I based our confidence level on a population of about forty-one hundred, our winter approximate population. So we do have a ninety-five percent confidence level on these with five percent margin of error and the ideal sample size was three hundred fifty-two people. Even if you discount the number of online surveys that we received, we had more than three hundred fifty-two surveys come back to. Excuse me, technical difficulties here. We had more than the three hundred fifty-two surveys that we needed to come back in person. So we're very confident with them. I included in your packet all of the survey feedback, all of the comments that were made. And basically, there were three top survey choices and it didn't matter which survey was done, the same three were at the top. They were just in different one, two and three order. But from the in-person surveys, the top survey response was for repaving existing roads. People want us to take care of the roads that we have. And then a running track behind the old middle school, which may or may not be feasible based on what kind of amount of property is left back there once the building has been partially torn down. And a recreation community center came in third with the in-persons. And then there were some comments from some people who thought that maybe we could take the old academy and do something with that so that that could become a community center. Kill two birds with one stone. And then when it came to the online surveys, the top was, I think it was the running, running track or recreation center maybe, but the same three came in.
Well, in all the meetings I've ever attended for economic development, comprehensive plan, number of other things, whenever we did a survey, one of the top responses and actually always the top response is people want more recreational choices. They want more recreational choices. They don't want their taxes to blow up for them though. So that makes it a challenging ask, but I think we can do some things. And we have managed to to fix a few things around town without increasing the town budget.
There were quite a few comments throughout, scattered throughout, both online and in person, about watching the taxes. I think people were watching what was on the ballot this year and, you know, realizing that was going to be additional expenditures affecting their taxes. And they want us to be very careful on how they're spending their money. I, just an interesting thing, if you remember a few Novembers ago, two, two November, three Novembers ago, twenty nineteen, you did a survey at the polling place or Kurt did a survey asking people what they wanted to do with the old middle school. And those surveys came back about fifty-fifty, demolish it, turn it into a community center. So a community center is something I think that is.
It's on everybody's mind.
It is everybody's mind. When it came to the department heads and the division heads, our number one priority and we've got, we've got costs on this for about five hundred thousand dollars for Bray to Brown there is a salt shed for the Public Works Department. That rose to the top. All the department heads and division heads agreed on that being a priority. It's a safety issue. Keith can tell you some of the issues there, but I can tell you, we've had kids doing backflips off of it last week at the fair because there's just no way of closing that sand and salt pile and keeping people out of it. It's just a dangerous situation. Try and get vehicles up there. One could flip easily. So we need to enclose that. So we did talk to Rob Prue, an engineer that we work with a lot, and he was able to get some costs for us. I talked to a manager in another town who had recently built one, a little larger than probably what we need, but it's running right around five hundred thousand. Obviously, that's something that we go forward with.
And that's a, that's a built structure.
It's a built structure.
I I would, I would like us to look and consider a tension structure.
What?
Tension structure. Rob will know what I'm talking about. They should be, that that should be thirty to forty percent less than a built building and provide the same coverage and and amenities.
Sprague, Sprague Energy has one of them.
Yeah.
Is it fabric?
Well, it's, it's, it's a solid metal frame and it's a heavy fabric.
Pretty sure.
I guess I'll have to see that.
Yeah, I can get.
That seems a little rugged for for a tension structure.
I can get you some more information.
Okay.
Um, so a couple of other things that I wanted to say, and then I'll just throw this to you all to discuss. One, this is not in stone. What's on here? It's just a guide for staff to know how to plan budgets going forward. And I'm sure most of you all know that. I reached out to the bank on the Wilson Pond Culvert project. So that project is coming in about a hundred thousand dollars under budget in what we borrowed. In addition to that, we have ninety-five thousand dollars that the state is giving to us. So I asked how much it would cost, what our annual payment would change to if we pay down a hundred ninety-five thousand on that. And that's the good thing about going through the bank, we can pay down that debt. And that will bring that payment down from about forty, forty-one thousand a year to fifteen thousand a year. So that's thirty-five thousand that we can, we can use going forward as well.
They're still competitive with a bond bank, right?
They're always a little higher than the bond bank and they won't go out as far as a bond bank. They'll only go fifteen years.
But the latitude you have with your finances when stuff like this happens, you know, you're not locked into that twenty years.
Right, with the bond bank, you can't pay it down. So if a project comes in like Wilson, Gilman Packard came in less, the only thing I can use that money for is to pay on the next payment, which I plan to do this year, which is why that payment's not going to affect the mill rate.
So what's the term for the Wilson Pond?
Um, ten years.
So theoretically, if we were to bond approximately five hundred thousand for a salt shed over a ten-year period, we'd only be asking for maybe an additional ten thousand a year for appropriation if we applied thirty-five thousand to it?
Just about that. I did some rough figuring on a fifteen-year, fifteen-year with Anders Skoggin. Well, actually, I went on the bond bank because it was easier to just plug the numbers in. So that first payment would be in two thousand twenty-four and that's only. So that first payment would be in twenty twenty-four and that's only like four thousand dollars because your first payment's an interest only. And then there would be forty-four, so you minus out the thirty-five.
That's bad for a guess.
No, that was really good. That was really good. So for major purposes, that's what we were looking at. However, we do have some, you know, other things that we don't know. And this is where I'm hoping that the infrastructure bill, if it gets passed in DC, is going to help us because the ARPA funds are not going to, but we have to get the dams assessed. We know they need work, but until we have the proper assessment done, we don't know what that work is. And it's about, it could be twenty-five hundred dollars per dam just to assess what they need. So there's that and then whatever they need after that is extra. The other thing is the Grover Street Bridge needs to be replaced. That's pretty dangerous. We have some concerns about that to the point where we might have to eventually shut that down at some point. So I'm hoping infrastructure funds might help with that, but we don't know. The Grover Street Bridge.
In the center of town.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's, well, that's the only way that person gets to his house.
Yeah, we were looking at that.
Now, Public Works did a lot of timber work on that like three, four years ago.
But it's just shemmed up by rocks now.
It would be cheaper for us to buy the house than to take
Buy the actual brick. Right, right. The flax is pretty good.
Oh, yeah. Right, Keith, that'd be cheaper for us to buy the house and fix that bridge?
I think it was a hundred thousand to fix that bridge.
Yeah, Rob gave us a price of about a hundred thousand. He was basing that off of, you know, some of the costs involved in doing the project down on Beach, on the Beach Road, so. So you have this spreadsheet that we provided for you. Tim had mentioned to me the other day phosphorus detention ponds.
Retention.
Retention, retention. I reached out to Bill Monagle. He said that he did not feel that that was something that we would have to do. He, other, other than if we have big development.
I brought it up because I was asked to.
Yeah. So I figured I'd reach out to him because you had mentioned that you would talk to him.
Yeah, people on the planning board asked me to bring that up.
Yeah. Unless we are doing a big project, big development, Bill didn't see the use of
Well, that's, that's why they brought it up because we're ever hopeful that we'll get a big project at some point.
Yeah.
And that's what we'll leave there.
Yeah. But they can require that. The planning board can require people to do that.
So I would think we need to give serious consideration to locking down cost on the salt shed so that we can, we can consider presenting it for the next budget.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, then it'll be six hundred thousand before Calvin's gonna hand up. But before, if it goes another year before we put it on, then it'll be six hundred. And the way that petroleum is, and if it is a suspension
Tension.
Tension building, then it, it's structured, then the fiber's gonna increase significantly as costs go up, so. I think ten thousand a year basically is a pretty small ask to get that done.
Yes.
And it'll save, it'll, well, save a lot of well, it'll save a lot of man hours just breaking up chunks of sand and salt to go through.
You guys have to get on the trucks.
So a big risk, it mitigates a lot of risk.
Didn't we have someone a number of years ago who did fall?
Yes.
And there was a rather costly workers comp issue with that. I'm pretty sure there was.
Well, that's a good way to have a fatality too.
Yeah, I think we don't need. So the, what I've got in front of me is a quote that was done for two thousand four for three hundred seventeen thousand. But Rob feels that with today's prices, it would be in the five hundred to five hundred fifty thousand dollar range. But he has roofing siding, laminated arches and framing.
Yeah, that's not a tension structure.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we do need to ask him about that. I know Sprague, I'm pretty sure that the the building Sprague has to house the salt that gets struck out is a, is a tension structure.
And you're comfortable with that?
Long that fabric.
Twelve to fifteen years. Twelve to fifteen years. Then you got nothing. You start over.
Well, you have the, you have the structure.
You have the structure and the recovery. Yeah, but all the cost is in the cover.
Well, let's, let's get some information on lifespan of the, of the covering, what it is to replace it, when it has to be replaced. And then, because even if you build a, a building, you're still going to have to re-roof back in fifteen or so years.
Well, hopefully it would be twenty to twenty-five.
Well, they don't make
No, it's gonna house salt. It's not.
Well, that's true. There will be some
Salt's pretty detrimental.
There will be some deteriorates.
I mean, if you want to see what salt just does to wood even, I have a mineral lick in my horse shed and the wood around the mineral lick. It's crazy what, it's not just metal that salt affects. It affects a lot of things.
It causes concrete to deteriorate. It's hard, yeah. So so regardless of what kind of structure you put up there, there's gonna be some maintenance costs. So I think what we need to do is identify what the expected maintenance cost would be for each structure and then make a decision based on those, on the math and the workability of the structure.
So the other things that we've got sprinkled through here are just some things that we know are coming up and just some maintenance issues. We're going to have to do a revaluation in about four years according to Donna. So we thought it's important to start putting away a little bit rather than have that whole amount hit you in that year, start a reserve account for that. The windows at the town office need to be replaced. They're in terrible condition. There are some offices where you can't even open the windows. That's a safety hazard. So we want to get those replaced. Comston Hall condensers, we want to start a reserve account for that because as Dennis can explain to you, those are about to go. And basically the other things that are in there are annual or every couple of years, things like replacing cruisers and Dan had asked that we put a placeholder in for him to put a pumper on tank eighty-five, pumper right there. Yeah, and Dan's here too. So I have plugged that in. And then the other thing is even though a public safety, combined public safety building came out pretty low on the public's survey results, I did plug it in out to twenty
Instead of going through town, they take that left and they take my road and cut it over to Oakdale.
Most people now do these jobs.
Right. I know, but I have had
Coming out of there.
Right. But I have had some people come on the road and there's a lot of people who don't live on the road. They're using it just for that purpose, a connector.
I was just gonna say, as I said before, when we were talking about Cressy Road a couple of months ago, whatever. When we, when we were approached about Gilman Road, we suggested to those that were, that lived on the, on the road that were really anxious about getting paid, that they wait until the, the bonds for Comston were paid off. And, and then we would put that issue before the, the voters because they had a better chance of being approved. Now, I'm not opposed to putting it before the voters earlier if that's what everybody wants to do. I'm just suggesting that maybe we advance the same thought process to the folks on Cressy and see if
I don't have any problem with that. I'm just saying we need to get a cost. Design study done and we need to know what, we need to make some progress on and figure out how much it's gonna cost and where it's gonna fit in.
I understand all of that. I heard all of that. All I'm saying is that when, when the subject comes up, if we have a thought to the best way to accomplish, because it takes a, it takes a townwide vote to approve that funding and, and given the results of the survey, since it's not a high priority, I think we, we should be helping people understand that if we give them the best opportunity, it's more likely to succeed. That's, that's my only thought.
It's no different than how you decide you're gonna do things on your house. You have to wait till, you know, one thing's paid off before you go take something, you know, out again to pay, you know, a loan for something else. So coming up with that plan and having things drop off and new things come on, there's always gonna be projects, but you have to be mindful.
And one thing that would be very helpful over the next couple of years would be to capture all of the maintenance costs that go into that road, specific to maintaining that dirt road.
Right. That was another thing we did for the Gilman Road.
Yeah.
And it showed that the ten-year maintenance cost wasn't that much lower than paving the road.
Right, right. It was, it was almost, well, it wasn't a wash, but it was within about maybe twenty percent of being a wash.
It was, it was closer than you'd think. And the other, the other thing that I might ask, I mean, you have that excavator now, right?
Yeah.
That's in. And I know you had told me you're planning on doing some ditching and drainage and repairs on that road. Might be good to maybe involve the people on the road and say, hey, you know, we're here, we're doing this. Let us know if you see something, you know, so on and so forth. And maybe make them feel like we're actually trying to listen to them.
We kind of look at Cressy the same way we look at the public safety building, you know? If we didn't get a lot of support on the surveys, how much support would we get when they were actually marking the yes or no on the ballot? But we didn't do away with it completely. We still put it out there as a possibility. The only other thing I wanted to mention was Mike had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting about putting some, some figure in for the middle school. I had not put a figure in originally when we were talking about the possibility of a one point seven million dollar bond. I had done some research on that and it would have been about a hundred fourteen thousand a year payment on that. But we don't know at this point and we won't know until after the building committee gets up and running and what it wants to do and we get some costs, how much we need to plug in there. So that's why I left that one empty.
Yeah, and my only thought with that is when you're moving forward with your, with the capital improvement process, if you don't have that in there, you know, a good guesstimate, you know, say it's because I think you probably, you know, hope your fundraiser goes great, but the way that building materials cost, labor costs, everything has increased since Bob did a generation on that estimation for that building. That was not a contractor estimated. That was generated through a computer that just best guessed. And his own admission, that could be thirty percent either way. And usually it's the other way, the wrong way. So if you tack that on to the one point seven plus whatever the anticipated increase in building cost, I think there's gonna be some sticker shock there, so.
Well, I would point out, Mike, that we can't go beyond one point seven without asking.
Right, but, well, then that's exactly what I'm saying, Tim, is that I would plug the one point seven in.
I can plug the one hundred fourteen thousand in if that's what you want me to do.
I'll
At least there's enough in there.
For that, for some, for some small reason because we're gonna have at least two hundred thousand from the sale of the Cottrell School that's gonna be free. And, and that was authorized to be used. And I, I think on our worst day, we should be able to generate another two hundred from fundraising. I, I think it should be substantially more and I hope it is. But I, I would think that right now the, the biggest would be one point three.
And then when do you want me to plug that in?
Well, the cost of money is gonna increase, so
This is true.
So we, we need to think about, nothing's gonna no bids are gonna be awarded, nothing's gonna happen for a year probably, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I don't know about that. I think, I think what might happen and what we might want to do, and of course this is a broader discussion for next meeting. But we're gonna wanna, at the very least, stabilize the building, which means foundation, tearing down the additions to that particular building, brick walls and a roof. We don't need to really worry about other things. We might wanna take and say, let's get that oil tank out of the ground because it's only three or four years from end of life. And, you know, recover the oil from it and use it elsewhere. There'll be some other considerations, so we may wanna do part of that and then try to hopefully say, okay, the rest of this, we're gonna do as we get our fundraising and we're gonna have to do it on a schedule.
Well, you're, you're not, I guess I've lost you because
And ask the voters for five hundred thousand dollars and then say we're gonna, the project's gonna cost one point seven and we're gonna fundraise the rest. You have to get the voters to authorize that whole one point seven.
It's an academic point.
I know. Doesn't matter.
And they get it.
Because
We're, we're there, you know?
The nice thing was, is that we found out that the majority of people wanted to save the building, whether saving it, you know, with the one point seven or voting no not to demolish it. I mean, it was pretty clear that either way, people wanted to save the building.
Well, like I said, this is a broader discussion for next time.
But I, I think one of the things that we do need to think about is the whole recreation issue because it's glaringly apparent that the RSU is less and less excited about letting us use the buildings. We sign checks for, for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars every month. And, you know, if we don't have a recreation facility, then we can't get into the buildings that we currently pay for. So, you know, coming up with a plan for a recreation facility and having a, a recreation department that can be really motivated in supply programs to make it utilized is the biggest thing, you know? So as we look at economic development and look at recreation directors that do programs year-round and have after-school programs. I mean, there's a whole broader topic beyond just having a recreation building. So if you have a recreation broader topic beyond just having a recreation building, so if you have a recreation building, who's going to be in charge of handling the scheduling and, and figuring out what type of recreation's gonna go on in there, are we gonna have yoga classes, are we gonna have pickleball, you know, on and on and on? I mean, there's, it, it doesn't end with having a recreation facility, it, it's gonna continue from there, so.
Well, we don't need to approve the capital improvement plan, you know, immediately, I can get some more numbers for you on Cressy and I'll see what we can come up with for the middle school, but just hopefully to propose capital improvement plan on the bottom that those, that the department heads have come up with. Hopefully, that part at least, we can move forward with.
Well, just approving that by consensus doesn't mean, and which would be adequate, doesn't mean we can't change something at another time, doesn't, doesn't mean that at all.
Well, and you know what's a priority today can become at the bottom of the list tomorrow. If a building collapses, so, you know, that's the thing with capital improvement, you never know what tomorrow might bring. It needs to be fluid, yeah.
I don't, I don't have any problem with it as a tentative moment. Now, like I said, we will probably change things as we go forward anyway.
Thank you. You know, that's it.
I'm going with you, Jerry?